Thank you, Mr. Lee. And item three is the adoption of the meeting agenda. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and thank you, Mr. Short for the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I meant to men— um, I'll go ahead and announce that that pass is five to zero. Mr. Allen will be joining us via the phone tonight. Item four is matters from mayor. Vice Mayor Wood and I had the opportunity to attend the EDA pitch night last Monday night where eight potential small businesses presented plans to be considered for grant funding in front of a panel of judges. I was impressed by the level of businesses competing and did not envy the judge's decision. I would like to extend my congratulations to the four recipients who were awarded grants and encourage all of those who applied. And item five is matters from council. Anybody? No? Okay. Item six is consideration, and bless you. Item six is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes five to zero. Item seven is to present a proclamation acknowledging the citizenship and contributions of Mr. Jimmy Owens. Mr. Short, would you please?
My pleasure. Want to provide this recognition to Mr. Owens for his tireless service to our community, and it's my privilege to read this aloud. Whereas Mr. Jimmy Owens has been an honored member with the Waynesboro community since his birth in 1945, and whereas after graduating from Waynesboro High School in 1966, Jimmy entered the United States Army, serving in Greenland before going to Vietnam from 1968 to 1969. And whereas upon returning to the United States, Jimmy married his wife Linda at the Grace Lutheran Church in 1970 and welcomed their son John in 1971. And whereas Jimmy worked at the DuPont plant in Waynesboro for one year before returning to the Army until his discharge in 1974. He then joined the Army Reserves for 14 years, working in the communications area as well as co-piloting helicopters. And whereas Jimmy retired from Wayne Techs after 32 years of service when he committed himself to helping others full-time. And whereas Jimmy has been an outstanding community member, serving his fellow citizens as a committed Kewaneean, being awarded the Kewaneean of the Year in 2011, as a caring member of Habitat for Humanity, building— helping build 10 houses and repairing others for low-income families, where he has— where he was awarded the Miller Full— uh, Millard Fuller Award, as a dedicated member of the American Legion Post 340 since 2001, as a faithful volunteer with the Wayne Theater Alliance, with United Way Stuff the Bus Campaign, the Boys and Girls Club, and with Mills on Will's, just to name a few of his civic contributions. And now therefore be resolved that I, Lana Williams, Mayor of the City of Waynesboro, do hereby recognize Mr. James Jimmy Owens for his lifetime of dedication and friendship to his family, his friends, his country, and all those who benefited so greatly because of all of his endeavors. And when is thereof, I do set my hand and cause the seal of Waynesboro to be affixed this 24th day of April 2023. Mr. Owens, do you mind coming up and accepting?
We're expecting like a two or three-hour speech, all right?
Don't get him started.
Yeah, let's get off of here.
Good.
We have quite a lengthy meeting. You do not feel the need to stay any longer. If you would like to exit, please feel free to do so. I'll give you a few minutes to clear out, and then we'll move on.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Item eight is to present a proclamation naming April 23rd through 29th, 2023, as National Library Week in the City of Waynesboro. Mr. Wood, would you please?
Yes, I will read this as written. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries strive to be trusted and welcoming institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are a— are cornerstone of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Lana Williams, proclaim National Library Week, April 23rd through 29th, 2023, during this week. I encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Waynesboro to be affixed this—the 24th day of April 2023. Signed Lana Williams, Mayor, City of Waynesboro, Virginia.
Okay. I would like to call on Ms. Susan Verson. Okay? There you are. Would you like to say a few words?
First celebrated in 1958, National Library Week is sponsored by the American Library Association and observed, as the proclamation says, in libraries across the country each April. All types of libraries, school, public, academic, and special participate. The theme for National Library Week 2023 is "There's More to the Story," illustrating the fact that in addition to the books and library collections available in a variety of formats, libraries offer so much more. WPL is a perfect example of this, with our mission to connect people with information, resources, entertainment, and each other. Enjoyment can be found in our physical items like books, magazines, and DVDs, our online resources and programs, but also in the unexpected things and services you find in your library, like a notary, seeds for your garden, kits for your book club or hobby, museum or state park passes, and in our case, dinosaurs. With our physical space, we provide internet and technology access and support for businesses, job seekers, and entrepreneurs. But perhaps most important are the connections people make with each other in the library and with the staff. I am so lucky to work at WPL. I work with wonderful people who all feel passionately about helping their patrons, community, and each other. Tomorrow, as part of National Library Week, is actually National Library Workers' Day, so I want to recognize and celebrate all the staff at WPL. Thank you for your continued support of the library.
Thank you. Okay. Item nine is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance imposing taxes for the calendar year of 2023. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, ma'am. Members of council, the city manager's recommended fiscal 2024 budget is built on various taxes, as I'm sure you're aware. Annually, the council must adopt personal property, machinery and tools, and real estate rates. The rates on which this budget is balanced are 77 cents per $100 of value for real estate or real property, 325 for personal property, 325 for machinery and tools. The rates represent a reduction in the real estate tax rate of 13 cents per 100 to offset the impact of required general property reassessment, as well as we've recoupled the personal property and the motor vehicle tax. So those are the rates on which the public hearing is held this evening and the rates on which the budget is currently balanced.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hamp? No? Okay. Before we begin, I would like to remind speakers to state your name and address for the record. You'll have four minutes to address council. You'll have—the light system serves as a timer. Once it turns yellow, you'll have approximately 30 seconds remaining. The red light indicates your time is up. We ask that you direct your comments directly to council, and please be respectful of all those who are speaking. I hereby open the public hearing. Mr. Hamp.
Mr. Frank Rot.
You answered my question when you gave me the tax rate. You said the budget's already been prepared and the rate has been set, 77 cents?
So the budget is prepared and balanced, but this council has not set the rates or adopted rates, and that's the purpose of this public hearing, is to receive public input on the proposed rates.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know that—I thought that was going to be tonight, but it's not, as far as the budget is concerned.
Tonight is a public hearing based on the tax rate that we have advertised.
So three public hearings may be helpful for me to list. So three individual public hearings this evening. The first is on all of the tax rates, only two of which changed. The real property tax rate changes from 90 cents to 77 cents, whereas proposed to change. And the motor vehicle tax changes from $2.65 to 325. That is the recoupling. You'll recall last year, council and the staff helped facilitate a reduction in the motor vehicle tax because we saw extraordinary increases in those values. We are alerted to the fact by the commissioner this year that, interestingly, those values seem to be correcting back to where they were pre-last year. And so my recommendation is that we recouple those rates. And as we did last year, we'll monitor those assessment—the assessment process through the summer, and if we've misjudged or misforecast, we can return to council with a recommendation to adjust accordingly.
Would you like to please address council and just state your name and record and—
My name is Frank Rot. That's R-O-T-T. I live at 220 Jocelyn Lane, Waynesboro. My phone number is 540-451-2884. And I— my question was about the—the rate. I know the rate— current rate is 90 cents per 100, and it's been that way since 218. And I did a little calculations on my own reappraisal, and I worked on getting the rate equal to what my tax was for 2022. And it was a 70 percent— pardon me—a 70-cent increase on my existing rate—or on my new rate, appraisal rate, that brought the number almost exactly to what I paid for last year in taxes. It was 333— $3,330 I paid, and with the 70% of my new appraisal, it came out to $3,360. So a 70% rate was a good rate to start with, and if the—the budget people here use that as a tool, taking all of the assessment totals, which would include all of the new homes up and through whenever they do the budget, and then work the numbers back to find out what the total revenue was last year, and that would give them a really great starting point for a new 2023 budget. Because I did it, like I say, I did it at the house, and it's on my own, and it was 70%— or pardon me— 70 cents equaled what I paid last year. So you're saying it's going to be a 7-cent increase for the new budget based on the proposal. But doing it, looking at the total assets of the assessments all the way through now, because all the new homes that have been built in—in Waynesboro would give them a really good number to start with. And I looked at some of it, and you can't—you can't program new homes into a budget construction. But Ryan is putting 220 new homes up. Atlantic Construction is adding 184 right off of Hopeman, and Ryan is on on Ivy, right ac— almost right across the street from me. So the real estate taxes are going to really increase for the revenue for the City of Waynesboro over the next year or two. So I hope they use that in their planning for later on. But anyway, that's my thoughts on the budget for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alfred Swicegood.
Alfred Swicegood, 228 Stone Wall Drive in Waynesboro, Virginia. And thank you, Madam Mayor and the councilman. Appreciate you all hearing us and and ready and wanting to hear what we say and feel. But I was a bit disappointed that we couldn't do better and come closer to the equalize— equalizing this rate this year, because last time, we took the full hit and the rates stayed very high. So I was hoping that we could do better this year for planning this year's real estate tax. And again, it's very difficult for us limited income aging people to absorb all of this. And as far as selling, looking at what we get, sell the house. I can't move. I can't sell. I've gone too long here, as much as I've loved living in Virginia, in Waynesboro. But anyway, I hope that you could make the other considerations. And I'd like to say that from many times and things that I've observed, I really think we could do better in managing and save a lot of money, and I think that we could work a lot more efficient. So I know that I don't know all the facts, but things look different to different people. But I really think that that's where we need to look at seriously and try to cut those that work more efficiently and get more out of the dollar that way. I don't like to see the salaries cut or 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 not increased as they need to be, or the jobs and positions, and especially in education. So that's—I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Laura Riggin.
Good evening. My name is Laura Riggin. I live on Village Drive in the City of Waynesboro. I would like to speak tonight both as a Waynesboro property owner and as a member of the Waynesboro Education Association, and ask you not to lower the tax rate from the city manager's previous proposal of 79 cents. I am a public employee, but not one directly affected by any raises the city offers to its employees. I think I can speak with understanding and without personal self-interest about your proposed raise for Waynesboro's public servants. I ask you not to make a decision that requires you to delay raises for those employees, or one that requires the city to wait to fill positions for with—for which it has both needs and applicants. It will mean a little extra that individual property owners have to pay in property taxes, but it is worth two more cents on $100 to pay city employees a fair and competitive wage. It is worth the increase to fill empty positions instead of relying on current employees to pick up the slack by doing the work for those empty chairs. I began teaching at Waynesboro High School 24 years ago. In my second or third year here, we began a renovation that was intended to be the first of three phases. That first phase was completed in 2003, and then nothing else happened. In 2015, I spoke before the city council, asking for support for a new renovation or a new high school building. Our science classrooms were terribly outdated. Our HVAC system was not doing its job. A ceiling had collapsed around that time, and we were short of classroom space. My one personal concern, which made me favor a new building, was that my youngest child, who was in the seventh grade at the time, would have to endure so much construction during her time at Waynesboro if renovation was the option the city chose. Renovation was certainly better than inaction, though. City council did commit to renovation, which was designed, again, to be completed in three phases. This was eight years ago. My seventh grader graduated three years ago. And once again, after the first phase, nothing has happened. Though our building is more secure, and the roof was repaired, and some of our classrooms have been updated, our science classrooms remain untouched. The HVAC in the 70s wing has only gotten worse in the last eight years, and we continue to be short of classroom space. As you consider the adjustments to our tax rate, I hope that you will be forward-thinking about the needs and opportunities for this community. Do not drop the track— sorry, do not keep the tax rate at a bare-bones level, but rather have vision for the future of this community. I hope at least that you will look backward far enough to honor the commitment of completing the last two phases of renovation that council promised to our school system and our community in 2016. Please make sure the tax rate you set is sufficient to fund human resource and capital needs and the commitment city council has already made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Dell.
I'm Susan Dell. I live at 520 South Ellison Lane here in Waynesboro. I have— like all citizens, I think, who own property, we got our notice of assessment at the beginning of February, and probably like most, I opened it, hoping that my property had gained in value since as a senior. That's my major—that's my major investment, and so it behooves me to have it go up. And it had $55,000. And now, if I can just set that aside, because that's a conversation I don't need to have. I'm happy with my assessment. Then I looked at the tax, and going forward, it would be nice for all of us, I think, possibly, instead of putting in the tax amount, which went at the 90 cents, and 90 cents with a tiny asterisk, which goes down to the smallest font here, that says the rate has not been set yet for 2023, possibly just put TD—I mean TBD, to be determined, so that there's no confusion over that. So anyway, I took—I took a look at the 77 per 100 tax rate, and my taxes would go up $60 a year, $5 a month in reality. If I looked at 79 cents out of 100, it goes up to $12.25 per month. If I looked at 84 cents on the 100, it goes to a dollar a day to live in this city, which I don't find exorbitant at all. We have needs. We have a need certainly for education, for more police and fire, and to be competitive with other areas around here, to bring in staff, to upgrade resources. So I would urge council to consider raising it to at least 0.79, or as I say, come down only to 0.79. And next time, to look at what do you need in order to function, and then look at what tax rate you would need to have that and have that your starting point. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sharon Van Name.
I've often heard that low taxes is one of the things that makes a city attractive to businesses and to people moving in. And I think that that is a portion of what makes a city attractive, but I think that there are other things, too, including the amenities and the services that we need to have, and these are supplied by our city employees. Employees need to feel that they are valued and supported in order to continue to give us the services that we need and want. I attended the budget session last week when the proposed budget was reduced from 79 cents to 77 cents. And much like Susan had of me, I went home and did a little calculating on mine, got out my assessment, and I find that for me, it makes $54 a year difference, that 2 cents. My assessment, as near as I could tell, is just above the median in the city, so I'm a pretty average taxpayer here. The things that we lost, though, out of that budget, according to the budget session, is two of the four police positions. We lost the—the requested help for the registrar and for the sheriff's office. And we say that we're giving our employees a 5% raise, but it's only going to take effect for six months. Now, I don't know how you all do math, but for me, a raise that's only comes for six months is not 5%, it's 2.5%. 5% was not particularly generous, 2.5% most certainly is not. It doesn't come anywhere as near to helping our employees keep up with the inflation that we know we all have. I do understand that there are folks that have difficulty paying any increase in their taxes, but one of the things about real estate tax is that it's based on the value of your property, so that those who own more expensive, more valuable property pay more in taxes as they should. As I said, I think I'm just above median, and I'm happy to pay an extra $54 a year, really and truly. This is not a lot to make sure that our city continues to be the kind of place where we want to live and where we provide basic fairness to our employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kurt Lilly.
Kurt Lilly, 218 Skyland. People say, well, the difference is only so many dollars, whatever it is. But we're already paying thousands of dollars to live here. It's not a dollar a day. It's thousands of dollars a year. Inflation has lowered our purchasing power. I—I know my raises haven't kept pace with that inflation. I don't know about you. So what the citizens have done is we've tightened our belts. The city has new sources of income, as has been mentioned earlier, yet it wants more from its citizens. I ask the city to do what Waynesboro citizens have already done, cut spending and get to a neutral rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phil Klon.
My name is Phil Klon. Live at 1150 Sherwood Avenue here in Waynesboro. Whether it's personal expenses or business expenses, I look at categorizing what has to be spent, put it in two different buckets or categories. One is nice-to-have, want-to-have maybe, and the other is you need to have. Now, I know this horse is already out of the barn, but—and and I guess we're committed to Sunset Park, and I feel like it'll be a beautiful park. It's going to have a million-dollar view. That'll cost a couple million. I don't know what the numbers are exactly, but I put Sunset Park as in the— It's not a dollar a day. It's thousands of dollars a year. Inflation has lowered our purchasing power. I know my raises haven't kept pace with that inflation. I don't know about you. So what the citizens have done is we've tightened our belts. The city has new sources of income, as has been mentioned earlier, yet it wants more from its citizens. I asked the city to do what Waynesboro citizens have already done, cut spending and get to a neutral rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phil Klon.
My name is Phil Klon. Live at 1150 Sherwood Avenue here in Waynesboro. Whether it's personal expenses or business expenses, I look at categorizing what has to be spent, put it in two different buckets or categories. One is nice-to-have, want-to-have maybe, and the other is you need to have. Now, I know this horse is already out of the barn, but... And I guess we're committed to Sunset Park. And I feel like it'll be a beautiful park. It's going to have a million-dollar view. That'll cost a couple million. I don't know what the numbers are exactly, but I put Sunset Park as in the nice-to-have category. On the must-have, it could be more police, help for the registrar, employee raises, city employee raises. So it's almost like we come at this with an attitude of, okay, we need to make a decision on how much to raise the tax rate. How about if we didn't spend as much money on the nice-to-have stuff and maybe consider lowering the tax rate? Not a wide deal, huh? Just a thought. Again, I don't have all the numbers, so I'd love to get those numbers, though, and just see exactly how that would work out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Deanne Dozier, or Dean Dozier?
Hello, I'm Dean Dozier, Village Drive in Waynesboro. And I appreciate you always giving consideration to what everybody thinks. I spent a lot of time getting the Jim Wood elected, and so I'm... Whatever he feels is a good rate, I'm behind that. And I do hope that the figures that you all are working with, that you're looking at things like we need more policemen on our police force. I think that's a priority, at least for me. And there may be things that we can cut back on that aren't as important. And I heard the first speaker talk about all the new development going up around Waynesboro, and I'd be interested to know... I know you're not addressing people's individual comments, but I would be interested in knowing how that affects the budget. And does this really... I realize you have to supply more services if you have more citizens, but also you have more revenue, and how does that all figure in when you're working on this budget? And I heard Phil Klon talk about the park. I was here for that public hearing, the Sunset Park, and I spoke against spending our COVID relief fund for that... For the park, and I said, I'll donate money for a park. I think it's a great idea, but I wonder if the horse is out of the barn on all the spending on that park, or if any of that, if those funds could be brought back and used for services. And I go back to the more police on the police force, which I think is a real fundamental thing that we need, and the city workers do need to be paid fair wages and things. So there's important things, and then there's possible things. I haven't seen the whole budget, and I'd be interested, as somebody else said, in seeing all the... How exactly how the money's being spent. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Peter Wong.
Good evening, city council, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all the other members of the city council. My name is Peter Wong at 1601 D Street, Waynesboro, Virginia. And I just don't have a lot to say. All I know is that after paying my taxes this year, or for last year, I'm just shocked, a shock at how much I needed to pay. And I don't think I would be in favor of more taxes, actually. So that's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Andrea Jackson.
My name is Andrea Jackson, and I'm Ward A. And I have a couple comments. I'll just say these bullet points, and then I'll say it says, budgets are the moral document. There's little in this budget that betters the people. It does. There's some things that do better the people, but I have an issue when you yourself go to a retreat, set goals as saying that you have your nature's crossing, which I, you know what I mean, I come to all these meetings and still don't understand what exactly that is all about, but I can see that sometimes you have to invest to get, you know, development. Then you want to have four police, and I've met with all the others except for Bruce and the mayor, and you know, saying, oh, okay, this is good. We need this, okay. And so then you get two of them, and then your third priority is register. So I got an issue, like when you say, what I was doing with my budget, this and that, why even set goals, your own goals, nobody else? Y'all set the goals, and then you don't even complete them. And the thing is, is that with this, I got an issue because I come, go into the meetings, the budgets, the whatever. Every time we get... Yes, Waynesboro has been known for retirement, for low taxes. People don't want to pay the taxes. But in reality, literally like Sharon and Susan said, it's a couple hundred dollars. And the thing is, is like, it says, where your treasure is, there is your heart. And some of y'all's heart is in y'all's own pockets, and it's about individualism instead of the community. Because how are we, as a community, going to pay your bills and just go through the basics necessities of a budget? I've seen year after year, all y'all strive to struggle to get through and balance the budget. It's always, we don't have enough money. We don't have enough money. First of all, it's not raising your taxes. It is your assessment was high. Your taxes is at 90 cents per $100 now. Now, it was... It was probably about 81 cents to pay for all of the wants or priorities that the city council said that that was their priority. Then it came, this is 79 cent is the proposal. Then y'all found some money, so y'all... Everybody's getting what they want. You know what I'm saying? The people who conservative is getting to say that they cut taxes. Jim is getting two of his police, not the four, but two. And then last time, Terry's got his part. And that's not to say all of these things is not good for the community, but what about the people who, you know what I'm saying, the actual people? What are we doing for the community? I am 100% for increasing the rate, once y'all increased it last year. And now, we need to invest. You know what? We need to spend some of this money. We don't need to cut some of it because we've been cutting for years. We have not been invested in the community, and like most of the people in our surrounding areas, we haven't gotten up to par. Yes, we are making money now, but what about in the 2000s when we wasn't?
Thank you so much for your time.
So Mayor Williams, that's the last individual signed up to speak. Pardon me. At this point, the council can introduce an ordinance with a second, have discussion, and then take a vote in two weeks. You could amend that ordinance prior to adoption in two weeks. If council chooses not to introduce an ordinance this week, you will need to continue this item, and it will be vitally important to resume progress on the budget at our next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't allow you to close the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. I close the public... Hereby close the public hearing, and thank you, Mr. Hamp. Was there anything else you needed to add?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council, do I have a motion to either introduce or a motion to continue until the May 8th meeting?
Make a motion to continue.
Okay. And do I have a second motion?
I'll second.
Is there order, an order?
It's a point of order, Mayor. The motion needs to continue to a specific date. You had referenced May 8th, but the motion needs to say the date.
Okay.
Then I amend my motion to include the date of May 8th.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We will consider this at the May 8th meeting. Okay. Item 10 is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending sections 30-58 H3A and B.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's a point of order. Doesn't a motion, a second, require a...
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you. It requires a...
Vote.
Okay. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So that motion passes 4 to 1. Apologize, I've never done that before, so... Thank you, Mr. Short. Okay. Item 10 is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending sections 30-58 H3A and B, and 66-3C, 86-28A, and 86-139A, utilities of the Code of Waynesboro, Virginia. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, ma'am, and members of council, this is public hearing number two related to the budget this evening, and this public hearing is on the utility rates. As a brief reminder, it's recommended that the water rate or the consumption rate increase by 9% from $5.36 per 1,000 gallons to $5.85. Fixed charges recommended to increase by 3%. These are to fight, or fight, or address inflationary pressures in the water fund that are impacting primarily energy costs and chemical costs, and also to provide a wage increase for the employees in the water fund. Secondly, in the sewer fund, both the consumption and the fixed rates are recommended to increase by 3%. And again, that's primarily due to energy.
Those are backwards. The water fund's 3%, the sewer's not.
Okay. So Mr. McCormick tells me that the water fund consumption increases by 3% and fixed increases by 3%, and the sewer increases by 9% on consumption and 3% on fixed. And again, those are primarily for energy, chemical, and labor expenses. In the stormwater fund, we recommend a 3% increase, and then for refuse collection, a $2.50 increase per month, the majority of which is to fund a capital investment at the regional landfill for the construction of a new cell.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay, I hereby open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers signed up?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Rot, again.
Mr. Rot? You're signed up to speak. Did you want to address? Okay.
No other speakers.
Okay.
And same consideration for this ordinance as the previous.
Okay. So I hereby close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to introduce or a motion to... To consider what we were doing?
Continue.
To continue.
I'll make a motion to continue to May 8th.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. And any discussion? Nope. Okay, so we'll take a vote. All in favor to continue to the May 8th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes 4 to 1. Item 11 is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance for the annual budget for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2024. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, ma'am. This is the third and final public hearing on the budget, and basically is a consideration of the budget. Expenditure side, we balanced at 77 cents by reducing the length or the implementation of the employee raise. We removed an economic development incentive, which we typically pre-fund, but we can pay as we go with that, as we realize revenues associated with the new business. And then finally, we reduced an appropriation that we had in place to begin work on a renewal of our comprehensive plan in the Community Development Department. Basically, we have that allocation, which will provide some money to get started this fiscal year, but also gives us the ability to work toward a 77-cent tax rate.
Okay. And are there any questions for Mr. Hamp? Okay. I hereby open the public hearing, and do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Ms. Andrea Jackson.
Andrea Jackson, Ward A. So I'm trying to find the thing where it's like... So everyone is saying, oh, we want to do this or do that, or like... When people are like, we want to cut, or you should be more better stewards. I definitely think you should be better stewards of our money, but the issue is, is what are we going to cut? That's the issue. Are we fully functioning and providing what we have? Because if you've seen the budget, like a lot of people come, and the best thing Bobby had just ever said last year was during that, the meeting about the Sunset Park, everybody said, no, we shouldn't have it. And, you know, I was one of the people who was against it because I think it's a wonderful idea, but I did not think that COVID money should be used for that. But a lot of people came up here, and a lot of people wanted to fund the police and do this and do that. And he said at the very end of it, those same people who always want to fund the police be the first ones to want to have their taxes cut. And you just can't have it both ways. And so these people that y'all elected got to come up in here and govern. And sometimes they say, oh, we're going to have police, we're going to cut taxes, we're going to do all of this, but you can't do everything. Just like when we at our kitchen tables, we got to do our budget. And the issue is, as I said it before, you know, I like paying my bills. You know what? I'll tell y'all a verse. It says, I like paying the rent when the rent due. That's two-part. That's what the government needs to do. Sometimes you got to pay the people. You got to pay teachers, you got to pay police, you got to pay firefighters. And the situation is, is that we all pay taxes, not just property taxes, everybody. And the thing is, if you're blessed enough to have a house, which a lot of people don't, especially in Waynesboro, we have a high percentage of renters, you could probably afford a couple hundred dollars. So I like to know, I know y'all can't say it now, is when y'all kept it at 90 cents two years ago, did anyone, not any like company, but any personal person lose their house because they couldn't pay the taxes? That's the issue. I came here last week, two weeks ago, said, I of course understand that there are some elderly people and some people with disabilities that probably could use relief. There are issues out there. I would, you know, I'm trying to put a thing together, I will, you know, about just because you can't use a computer doesn't mean that that's not, you can't use it. The thing is that there's situations out there. It's just not one size fits all. This is about people who got money want to keep it. They don't want to invest in the city. And the simple fact is, is that it's a reduction. And the thing is, is that you could have kept it at 79, but you didn't. You kept it at... You went to 77 because you found some money. Just because you have money don't mean you can't use some more. That's the thing about investment. And the thing is, on everybody's side, you come up in here, you figure it out. Actually, and this is the thing, what I'm so tired of is that I actually come, I care, I find out, you know what I'm saying? I'm tired of like off the side, oh, you knew what you were talking about, but then it depends about your vote. And this is the thing with y'all, is that y'all going to do...
Thank you so much. Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. Was that... That was the only other one? Okay. Do I have a motion to introduce or to continue?
I'm a little confused on the purpose of continuing this particular.
Well, we have to pass right to do the budget.
Yeah, so we have to. We have to continue.
I'll make the motion to continue to May 8th.
To the May 8th meeting.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. And any discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion passes four to zero, four to one. All right. That takes us to item 12. And that's to receive a report considering adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding for the Stanton-Augusta-Wayansboro Regional Radio Project. Mr. Wilhelm.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The Stanton-Augusta County and Wayansboro, also known as SAW Regional Radio Project, has been a work in progress for over two years. The purpose of the new radio system is to replace the current system that has been in operation for approximately 33 years. This project will upgrade and replace the three localities' individual analog radio systems with digital radio systems that will enhance operability and serve all three localities for public safety, public schools, and public works. Tonight, you're going to receive an overview of the project from Director of, from the Director of the Department of Emergency Management and EMS, Gary Kreiser. At the conclusion of the presentation, staff would recommend council make a motion to adopt the resolution you have before you that authorizes the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding for the Stanton-Augusta County and Wayansboro Regional Radio Project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gary Kreiser.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhelm, Madam Mayor, members of council, staff. As Mr. Wilhelm alluded, this has been a over-two-year work in progress. All three of the localities have got to make some changes in their radio systems. We began these discussions looking at multiple options. One was to take on this project and continue as we currently are with our own independent radio systems. The other was to look at a broader, multi-jurisdictional, very broad regional radio system, basically buying into another existing jurisdictions, such as Charlottesville or Harrisonburg, or to look at a SAW radio system. Using a consultant, CTA Communications, we came to the conclusion that the best system for the three localities was a SAW regional radio system, using a shared approach to fund it. There's multiple pieces to a radio system like this. Number one, there's the infrastructure, which includes things such as towers. In this particular project, the vendor that we are considering recommended a six-site system. So there'll be six strategically located towers throughout the Stanton-Augusta-Wayansboro area, including the one that we currently use at the old landfill. There will then be the infrastructure equipment in each of the 911 centers. There'll be repeaters, control stations, a lot of technical things that go into that. Those expenses will be shared between the three localities using a funding formula very similar to what's used in other regional projects. 22% for the two cities and 56% for Augusta County. Then there's the subscriber units that go on that system, meaning handheld radios, walkie-talkies, and the mobile radios that are in police cars, fire trucks, ambulances, and also in our school buses. Those are going to be purchased more on a local basis. They wouldn't be part of the overall infrastructure, but they would be purchased through a shared contract, so the pricing would be much better. This project is to take us for the next 15 years. As Mr. Wilhelm alluded, this takes us from our current analog conventional radio system to a, what's called a trunked digital, the new FCC word, P25 compliant, radio system that would carry us again for 15 years. The MOU that was shared with you is a... Basically, how we're going to manage the system between the three jurisdictions for the next 15 years. There'll be a management board that includes the, myself, my counterpart in Augusta County, and the IT coordinator in the city of Stanton. We would, again, adopt a funding formula. There's a set of guidelines for how we would, we would manage the system, the infrastructure. Also, there's the funding for the maintenance, ongoing maintenance of the infrastructure of the system. What does this really do for us? It ensures that our first responders have the best technology that we can afford to provide to ensure that they have push-to-talk capability. In other words, when they key their radio, that they'll be heard and it'll be clear and understandable, and they'll be able to have those emergency communications with their dispatch center, with each other. It also enhances interoperability between our neighbors in Stanton and Augusta County, as well as our neighbors to the east in Charlottesville-Albemara, to the north in Harrisonburg-Rockingham, and to the south in Rockbridge-Buena Vista. We all share resources from time to time, and having that interoperable communications is critically important in a major emergency. So, again, there's a lot of technicality to the way this system works. It works similar to a cellphone system. But it will, again, it will take our region and our localities for the next 15 years. So I encourage, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. And I encourage you to consider adoption of the draft, draft MOU. There may be some small, minor additional changes that Mr. Hamp would have to consider. It is in final draft form, and the other localities are considering it as well.
Okay. Any questions? No? Do I have a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding for the Stanton-Augusta County Wayansboro Regional Radio Project?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mayor, before you continue, I'd like to take the opportunity to emphasize for everyone in attendance here that, to note that that project is replacing equipment that is 33 years old, serves our public safety infrastructure, and is being completed in a regional approach. So I think I would like to thank our staff and note for concerned citizens that I think it demonstrates a record of good stewardship and, when possible, working with our neighbors to produce efficiencies, improvements to service, but also lower costs than if we would have pursued the project individually.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 13 is to hold a public hearing and consider approving an application by Luxury Chariot Taxi Service for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to the city of Wayansboro. Mr. Wilhelm.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of council. On March 23rd of this year, the owner of Luxury Chariots, Sean Waters, submitted an application for a taxicab driver's permit to the chief of police for consideration. In accordance with Chapter 94, Article 3 of the Wayansboro City Code, Chief David Shaw has reviewed the documentation submitted and has determined through investigation that Mr. Waters is a person of suitable character and qualifications to conduct such a business utilizing a vehicle that is registered to him. On April 4th, Chief Shaw issued Mr. Waters a taxicab driver's permit, which is valid, which is valid for a period of one year. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to hold a public hearing and solicit input from the public regarding Mr. Waters' application for a certificate of public convenience and necessity. Once the public hearing has been completed, council will then need to determine whether a certificate of public convenience and necessity should be issued. Wayansboro City Code requires council to consider two things. One, that the public convenience and necessity require the proposed service. And two, that the applicant is operationally fit to offer the service and will abide by all pertinent statutory requirements. The applicant, Mr. Waters, is here tonight. I'd also like to add that Mr., when I was chief, Mr. Waters did have a certificate of public convenience and was a good steward and followed all the laws of the city of Wayansboro, so.
Thank you for that. All right, do we have any questions for Mr. Wilhelm? I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
Then I hereby close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity in the city of Wayansboro?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that passes five to zero. Congratulations. Okay. Item 14 is consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a memorandum of understanding with Sherri L. Smith Revocable Trust 16-1B, 16-1A, 16-1D. Melissa. Michelson, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As council is aware, the city entered into an agreement with the Sherri Legener Smith Revocable Trust regarding 89, 189 acres of property she was leaving to the city for a conservation area, a park. City staff has recently met with Ms. Smith in endeavor to remove that gift, if you will, from her trust and perhaps use other property in lieu of that or make other arrangements for green space. As the city doesn't necessarily need additional park property in that area, staff was amenable to those discussions and has entered into, or has suggested that we enter into a memorandum of agreement with Ms. Smith, requiring her to remove the gift from her trust, terminate the agreement that requires the city to accept the property as a park and operate it as a park. And also, some, you know, other technical things that we need to do with, amendments we need to make with her trust documents. And right now, it's believed that Ms. Smith has desires to either sell the property herself or develop it herself and plans to come before council for rezoning and potential other zoning requests from council. So we wanted to, like, set forth this memorandum kind of establishing all those additional respective steps of the parties. So this MOU just basically sets forward what's happened and what both parties intend to happen in the future. And the resolution just authorizes Mr. Hamp to enter the MOU with Ms. Smith and make those agreements that I just discussed.
Okay. Do you have any questions, council? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter the MOU? Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes five to zero. Item 15 is to receive information regarding opioid settlement funds, including regional program options, and consider adopting a resolution adopting Virginia's gold standard program. Ms. Newman.
For those of you who may not know, Ms. Newman is the Director of the Shandover Valley Office on Youth, a regional program that we undertake with the city of Stanton and Augusta County. And she's presenting tonight because she demonstrated some initiative and is particularly interested in the programmatic opportunities associated with the settlement fund. So I've asked her to share some of her knowledge.
Thank you for filling the time, Mr. Hamp, as I get this going. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Wayansboro City Council has already signed on with the Commonwealth of Virginia Opioid Abatement Settlements in 2021, and I believe in 2022. And those funds, we've begun as a city to receive those funds. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the gold standard for this and ask that you adopt the gold standard that the office... I'm sorry. The Opioid Abatement Authority has established, the OAA. In looking at the gold standard best practices that they have set up, there are many advantages to the localities in adopting this. Funds will have a clear set of rules that will be applied to all settlements. It will be administratively less complex. If you do not adopt this, basically, the city itself has to answer to each of the settlements and ensure the compliance of the use of the funds. The incentives that are offered are voluntary, but in the next slide, I'll show you what that looks like. 100% of the disbursements to the cities and counties and state agencies must be spent on abatement efforts, and I will discuss that briefly. There is no reimbursement of previous costs for supplanting also. Recipients must report outcomes to the OAA on an annual basis. And by signing onto the gold standard, again, this will make the reporting much simpler for us. In looking at this and in diving into the OAA, basically, it is very complex. It is somewhat confusing. And they're learning along with the localities, basically. So the settlement award is at the top. You can see how that is broken down. The pink area is direct shares that localities have already started to receive, so that's 30% of the settlement. The blue box there is if you, the reserved section, 15%. And if we go back up, if you take the gold standard, they're going to increase that 15% by 25%. So that is the incentive. So basically, you get more money in each locality if we sign onto this gold standard. Again, it's going to simplify things. They're going to work with us. They're set up across the Commonwealth to assist us with this. And my experience so far is that they're very receptive to the localities in assisting us on how to spend these funds. Let's see. This is as of March, what Wayansboro City is expected to receive. If you look at direct distributions from the settlement, that's dollar amounts that are coming into the city. The column that says from OAA is that extra 15% and then the 25% incentive on top of that for signing onto the gold standard. So if you look, it's distributed over 15 years. Some of them are still to be determined. The distributors column, if I can get this right, the distributors column is McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen. Janson is Johnson &amp; Johnson. The other column is new, and as you can see, is still being determined. And this does not include the settlements from Teva and Allergan, which is CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. So there are more dollars to be received. So, across 15 years, in my conversations with the three localities, you know, it doesn't look like a lot of money, but it is a lot of money across 15 years. And what my thought is, in looking at this, that the three localities putting their funds together will do the best service for the community as a whole. As I said earlier, part of the settlement for the opioid distributor outlined nine core abatement strategies. So that's part of the settlement. The OAA has adopted these best practices, these nine core abatement strategies. Again, when you take the gold standard, you are committing to these nine core abatement strategies. You don't have to do all of them. You have to do basically a needs assessment in your area, get input from the community, as well as local providers, to find out what areas we can do the best with the funds that we have. Just quickly, broaden access... Just quickly, broadened access to naloxone. That means that we can buy products. We can train both school personnel, community members, our EMTs, our police departments. We already have the CSB and the Department of Health that provide this type of training, and they do distribution. So we can help with that. Increased use of medications to treat opioid disorders. Augusta Health, the Community Services Board, and there are methadone clinics in the area can all, may be able to access these types of funds. Also, providing education and awareness and additional training fits into that category. The next two, provide treatment and support during pregnancy and postpartum period and expand services for neonatal opioid withdrawal syndrome. We do have a number of babies that are born in our area that are addicted. There have been programs, none of them, to my knowledge, are operational right now. Again, a regional effort will help us determine what programs are currently running, what programs could be expanded, or need to be restarted. And these funds can help with that. Fund warm hands-off programs and recovery services. So I had to look to find out what this was. Basically, this focuses on vulnerable groups of people who use drugs. So in the way that it's worded, I wasn't sure. There are some evidence-based programs out there that can be replicated, but basically, it's addressing the needs of people who have substance abuse disorders and a coexisting behavioral health need. So, and over 40% of individuals have coexisting. You can also address in here criminal justice involvement, pregnant and postpartum, and people with housing insecurity, because they are more likely to use substances, specifically opioids. Improved treatment in jails and prisons. We have a reentry program, Middle River Regional Jail. This can help with those programs. It can also work with the programs in the jail, again, to address prisoners who may be coming in that are addicted, to help so that when they are released, they are no longer addicted, and that we have services in place in the community so they do not regress again. Prevention strategies. Oh, let me go back to jails. Actually, jails and prevention strategies kind of mix. Prevention is where we are at the Office on Youth. I mean, we do prevention all the time. One of the things that can be approved in those two categories is a juvenile drug court, something we do not have in this area. It may be costly, but it's something that these funds, especially if used regionally, could start. And across 15 years, we have a lot of opportunities to start different programs. Other prevention strategies include advertising safe disposal programs in school and community education, and broad media campaigns. Harm reduction programs. Virginia Department of Health and Augusta Health have been discussing some of these. These are programs like needle exchanges, syringe, drug supplies, fentanyl test strips, and other harm reduction programs that would include HIV and hepatitis C education. All fits into these categories. And then lastly, data collection. Without data collection, we don't know if these things are working. So to have the funds for 15 years, we would also need to have a source, a way beyond just reporting back to the opioid abatement authority to collect data, see if we are succeeding or not. So I'm here tonight to ask you to please sign onto the gold standard. Programs in our area that follow evidence-based strategies, there's multiples of them already here. Most of the groups that I work with and that I've talked to, and those that have already done outreach to the localities, have evidence-based programs and door strategies and ideas. The dispersment of funds is not consistent year to year, as you saw on that slide. A regional effort will allow for planned multi-year programs and services that will best serve the citizens. And a regional effort will allow us to identify those additional agencies and groups that maybe are providing services, that need to expand services to address the opioid epidemic. I've also had people say that, you know, we're not a high opioid area, and we may not be as high as some inner cities, but we still have an opioid issue here as well. And education, for me, is going to be the biggest way so that we don't fall into those high opioid categories. Vaping is a concern in our area with the youth, and the chance of somebody thinking that they're vaping THC could be laced with fentanyl. So we don't want to have that. We don't want it on the front page before we get to this point. So I'm asking you to please adopt the gold standard. Questions?
Are there any questions?
Jenny, would you mind going back to the table with the show and the, yeah, thank you?
That one?
First, I've seen that sort of breakout, and I appreciate you sharing it. I would be interested to see what the direct distribution of settlements are for our regional partners comparative to our 15-year dispersment versus our partners.
Stanton City utilizing the same database, which is on the OAA website, total is around 770,000, and-
That's what the gold standard?
With the gold standard, if they were to adopt the gold standard as well. Thought I'd be asked. Augusta County, a little bit above 1.4 million if they adopt the gold standard. Now, the direct distribution on here is monies that is already coming in to the localities. So the use of those funds do need to be reported in some way. So again, adopting the gold standard gets us that fourth column from the OAA and that 25%, I'm sorry, gets us that 25% incentive. The column that says from OAA is when a plan is submitted of how you're going to use your funds. If plans are not submitted, then eventually money has to go back.
The other question, it might be for Mr. Hamp or Ms. Michaelson, is in the resolution, the final whereas, the City of Waynesboro voluntarily agrees to meet OAA's gold standard requirements in return for a 25% increase in OAA funding eligibility during fiscal years 23 and 24, where we're seeing a 15-year distribution of those, of that 25% proceed or add-on. So how is that, if our resolution states it's only applicable for two years, and our participation is applicable for two years, how is that amortized over a 15-year period?
I can answer that. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Sorry. You do have to reapply. So again, we have to put in what our plans are. We have to submit data back to the OAA and/or to the settlement funds themselves. And to continue to receive the funding, we have to put in resolutions for every few years that has not quite been determined. How often you will get to do that, like if it's for two years at a time, or if it will be for five years. Some projects are already being submitted for five years. They will, they're looking at, will you have to do a resolution in between? That also gives the settlements and/or the OAA an opportunity to look back and say, are you doing what you need to be doing with those funds? Is the use of the funds correct?
So the follow-up question, see, you got me going now. The follow-up question would be, that sounds a little, you know, I mean, it sounds very government, right? And in terms of the frequency of having to come back every couple of years involving presumably another resolution, seeking to re-enter into the OAA, that that's working out great, which I'm sure it will. But I would be curious about the monitoring, the cost of monitoring, and the overall administrative cost and monitoring that. Do we have a projection about, essentially, you know, 39,000 sounds pretty attractive until you span that over 15 years of additional labor and time and effort and tracking that's required to facilitate what you think you're getting. Just curious if y'all have figured out what that additional administrative cost would be.
Not completely. I've had discussions, and we have had, the three localities have had discussions together, and that has been brought up. So that is something that I think we are still working through, is that.
If I could just add as well, Mr. Short, or counsel, the OAA and/or the settlement defendants require, as part of accepting any of this, you know, not just the additional funding, but any funds, to keep records and reports of how the money is spent. So there's going to be administrative costs, no matter who we go with. Theoretically and ideally, going with the gold standard will reduce those administrative costs, because if we follow the authorities' plan, they've already said, okay, well, that's been approved, so we won't, we don't need these additional reports or, you know, additional plans. So I think that not only, and that's why they want to incentivize everybody to be able to say, don't everybody do their own individual plans, because that will be more administrative on the authorities' part as well. They said, well, we want these plans that have already been blessed. If everybody adopts them, that will reduce our administrative costs, your administrative costs, and we'll share some of our pot with you to do so. So I think you're correct. There will be administrative costs on part of the city as well as, you know, neighboring jurisdictions if you do regional use of the funds. But like I said, the way that this program is designed, that if we accept the gold standard, that will reduce those administrative costs. And the authority hasn't necessarily, you know, this is all very new, and they're still figuring out a lot of their guidelines and rules, but they have indicated that you're allowed to spend a certain portion of your settlement funds on administrative costs. So that should be, you know, part of the plan. Will that 100%, you know, match what the city actually spends, knowing the government? Probably not. But at least there will be some defraying of those costs as well, by using these funds that they're going to give us.
And just for clarification, so I heard maybe two distinctions I heard, just to re-ask it. What I think I heard is the distinction between the plan development and utilization of those funds, right, if it were a self, sort of, city-focused initiative versus a regional initiative, taking on the gold standard, and then just the question of having a performance audit, right? So I heard, I heard there's a performance requirement about how you're performing, at least I thought I heard that, that under the gold standard, we're required to articulate from a regional perspective how the use of those funds performed, and what were the outputs, versus a plan. I just would be curious if it's the same level of accountability.
Well, the gold standard isn't, just for clarification, the gold standard doesn't reflect that we're going to be doing regional efforts. The gold standard is that the city is saying that, yes, we will abide by the authorities' already approved plan or approved programs for the usage of this money, not create our own, or in conjunction with Augusta County and City of Stanton, create our own, and then submit those plans to the authority and/or the settlement defendants for approval. So the city could adopt the gold standard and receive those additional funds, whereas the City of Stanton could not, and we could still do regional things, and City of Waynesboro is the only one who gets that bump up of 25%. So the gold standard and the regional are two kind of separate issues. Both of them will provide, one, additional monies from the bump up, and better use of our collective pool and synergies of funds for programs for the benefit of the broader community. But the gold standard doesn't equate to regional use.
A requirement.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution adopting Virginia's gold standard program for expending settlement funds?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes five to zero. Item 16 is to consider adopting a resolution supporting the city of Waynesboro's application for a recreational trails program grant. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, ma'am. This is an application to the Department of Conservation and Recreation. The grant amount would be approximately $350,000 with approximately $70,000 local match. The project contemplated for the grant is to install, construct and install bathrooms in Basic Park. Presently, there are not functioning bathrooms there. We rely on portlets or porta-jons, and we feel like this would be a benefit to the folks that rely on that park for programming. We have a number of youth sports teams that use the park for practice. And so, the next item is also a resolution in support of a grant, as we have new council people and sort of a new configuration of council. I thought it would be appropriate to do a recalibration on our grant program and alert council to significant grant opportunities that the staff would like to pursue, get confirmation from the council that the benefits of such grant are in line with core services and the vision and values and objectives and goals of the council, and also that the council would be willing to appropriate the local match if there is one. And so you're asked this evening to offer a resolution of support approving the DCR grant for parks and recreation, and then we'll talk about an economic development grant after that.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries five to zero. Item 17 is to consider adopting a resolution supporting the city of Waynesboro's application for a Virginia Business District Resurgent Grant. Mr. Hamp?
Yes. So this grant is furnished by the Department of Housing and Community Development, Virginia Main Street Program. We contemplate a $100,000 grant application, which would require a $20,000 local match. This is a part of a resurgence, business resurgence grant, excuse me, resurgence grant. And various options for this grant include providing grants to organizations to serve historically economically disadvantaged communities, such as small, women-owned, minority-owned, and immigrant-owned businesses with targeted business district, provide grants for consulting services, technical assistance, training opportunities for entrepreneurs and small business owners. I think what Mr. Hitchens intends to do, if he is successful with his application, is to set up a matching grant program for facade improvements and technical assistance support, such as providing e-commerce opportunities. So again, these are, this grant program is intended to bolster the business recovery post-pandemic.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I think my only concern is when there's a matching, and we support that matching. If the grant's awarded, at that point, we don't have a lot of input going forward after that as to specifics. I know that's kind of hard, but I would feel more comfortable if I had a general idea of what I'm supporting, if there were some type of specifics in mind of what EDA plans to do.
So I don't know if you're seeking specifics beyond the facade grant program, but that's a program that historically we've operated and either funded exclusively with local funds or a combination of grant funds and local funds. But it gives the businesses an opportunity to refresh the front-facing parts of their business, either through awning or painting or signage. I think there's, so I think that's what he intends to do with this particular grant. If you would like greater detail than that, I can work with Greg to furnish that. grant. If you would like greater detail than that, I can work with Greg to furnish that.
I would.
Is there any term refrain on this?
Yep. I think this, I think this grant is due. Actually, I may have had the DCR grant in mind. I don't see a due date information or a timeline information with Greg's documents. So I think we can bring that back to you at the next meeting. And as I talk to Mr. Hitchens, if I find out that that's not possible, I could follow up with information individually. And I would say that, again, this is a little bit intended to ensure alignment and recalibration with staff's habit of pursuing grants, to make sure that, again, we're aligned with values and objectives, but also to prevent staff from, as we work through a period of getting to know one another, to prevent staff from doing applications that ultimately might not be supported by council. So I'll get with Greg and find out if there's sufficient time to get a confirmation. If I find out that there's an urgent matter, we'll work to clean this up offline.
As an item of order, do we need to make a motion to table?
Yes, we need to make a motion to continue.
Okay.
Yeah. Actually, if I could, just entertain a question, is, or just an observation, it's been some time since, you know, familiarity with the CDBG program and the facade grant program, but as I understand it, it is not, here's cash and go enjoy. This is a match program. So the entrepreneur, the building owner, the participant in the program, I think it's a dollar-for-dollar match or somewhere of that relationship or a scale, you know. So there is, essentially, there is a property owner's, property owner has to get in the game relative to it. I guess the only thing with leaving tonight and then coming back in a couple of weeks is that if we find out it's due next week, that I would almost, if, you know, to throw this out as an idea, is offer a motion of support with direction that pursuant to the successful award of that grant, that Mr. Hitchens come back and provide us before accepting the grant, that we would then, again, just out of caution, who knows what the timeline is.
That'd be acceptable to you.
Unless you know.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I was also just going to add that, to Mr. Lee's point, if the city doesn't decide to match in certain areas, the city would, the EDA or the city would just have to give that portion of the match back, you know. So it doesn't, this doesn't bind the city to any, you know, appropriations or any payment of any funds. So, you know, it gives, you know, Mr. Short's, you know, suggested motion, I think, would leave the EDA and staff at a better position and not affect your valid concerns at all.
Okay.
Kenny, I think it's a great, it's an excellent point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right. With that, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion pursuant to prior to acceptance, a staff report on the past history of the program and use of the funds moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries five to zero. Item 18 is communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp.
So I just have one item. Going back to item 15, I'd like to confirm with council that there's a level of comfort with us continuing to talk to Stanton and Augusta County about a regional approach to opioid programming, and we'll keep you informed, assuming things go well. If things go poorly, we'll update you as well, so.
Thank you.
Expect it'll be fine.
Okay. And that brings us to item 19, which is citizen comment period.
Yes, ma'am. Jordan Fust.
Hello, city council, staff. Thanks for being here tonight. I'm Jordan Fust. I live at 405 Lake Road in Stewart's Draft, and I run a business that operates here in Waynesboro. I've come here to speak with you before to support a rental inspection program, a program that the city has already spent funds when completing the comprehensive plan adopted in 2018 to prove that it was in need of. On page 27 of that comprehensive plan, you can look into this and see that it states to create a rental registry and inspection program by 2020. So we're here in 2023 with no registry or inspection program. I'm not sure what we spent to gather that data, but it seems to me that that is a failure to the community. And I'm not sure who we think those who access affordable housing are, but they certainly are not drug addicts, vagabonds, worthless people. They're just like you and I. Lots of young people here are seeking affordable housing. I've had many friends who've had to move from the area to find homes because they can't afford a large, single-family home. I don't know if any of you all have children, but I think that you would like to have a place where they can move during their 20s before, you know, really finding income streams that could support owning one of these homes or even renting one. And young people in the city is not just for fun. We are economic drivers. I helped to organize an event this past weekend and brought like 100 people into the city downtown, spilled out in the street, filled restaurants, and those people really loved Waynesboro. And if they wanted to move here, they wouldn't be able to because they would not be able to afford or find available housing. The housing that we have that is affordable is in disrepair. There's stories that we project out in the media of mold in apartments, and if we can't address these proactively, we're going to find ourselves in a much worse situation in the future. So if we can't support the inspection program, we need to hear ideas from you that are going to address the issues of available, affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Taylor Hanogoski.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Hanogoski. I live on Lake Road in Stewart's Draft and also operate a business that operates here in the city of Waynesboro. I have been a part of quite a few community organizations that have been having meetings over the last couple of weeks, couple of months, and such a common theme to our conversations has been the looming threat of gentrified development in Waynesboro. And I believe that the city council has the responsibility to be proactive in how we bring in outside development and acknowledge the ways that that development affects the residents of Waynesboro. So I would also like to speak to the need to develop a rental inspection program, which, again, reiterating what Jordan Fust said, has already been established through the comprehensive plan as being a need in the city of Waynesboro. And I would like to see this city support affordable housing now. We know that more and more residents are going to be coming from surrounding areas into Waynesboro, and I would like to see more support for the people who are here right now doing things to improve this community. I would like to see them to continue to have a safe, accessible, and dignified place to live, and I believe the rental inspection program is a way to do that. Thank you.
Nora Scott.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Nora Scott. I live in 291 Scotty's Lane, Livingston, Virginia. I lived in Ward A from 2006, trained to 2020. Before I get on my soapbox, let me start by saying to everyone on this council and everyone in this room that if your gut response to me saying what I'm about to say to you is to defend yourselves or to bristle with annoyance, then perhaps that is a sign that you care more about what I am saying about you personally than about the point that I am making. In case anybody doesn't remember me, I will reiterate, I lived in Ward A. I had a neighbor above me that suffered from substance abuse. I tried to contact my landlord. I did contact my landlord several times and am still recovering from both PTSD and the trauma associated with having to navigate that situation all on my own. I think that it is laughable that Mike Hamp or anyone on the city council would sit here and flagrantly tout this city as a beacon of hospitality in the valley when in writing, your hospitality only seems to extend to the police, to support tax cuts for middle-class homeowners, to anyone with capital who travels here to spend their money downtown, and to saving face after one of you decides to be unfunny, loud, and bigoted in public. Do you really think working-class people, black, disabled, marginalized, overworked, working-class people have the time to sit and fill out an inspection request to let you know that their landlord is refusing to fix anything or do anything with their apartment every time that it happens? Do you really think that disabled, marginalized people, working-class people, people with two or three kids, people having to work two to three jobs just to afford a two-bedroom apartment, have the time or energy to sit down and fill out an inspection request every time their landlord ignores bugs infestation or black mold? People who might not have access to a computer, transportation to the library, or a phone? Do you really think that after promising a rental inspection program in your 2018 comprehensive plan and then still not having anything substantial in writing to cement safe and reasonable, affordable housing as the standard in Waynesboro by 2023, that any of the marginalized, working-class people renting in the city would trust any of y'all to do anything for them? That they would waste their precious energy and the little time that they have to fill out an inspection form that may or may not do anything? Do you really think that they would? We have waited three and a half months to receive a proposed program from Mike Hamp for a rental inspection program that I and several volunteers who work have spent two to three years working on a program he agreed was needed. Three and a half months, and not so much as an email, a text, or a call to me or my constituents to let us know that he was still evaluating the data on whether or not a rental inspection program was necessary? Is my lived experience and the countless experience of other residents enough data for you? How am I supposed to extrapolate that Mike Hamp or anyone on this council even values their own word when verbalizing support for something? How is anyone supposed to trust any of y'all? Thank you.
Andrea Jackson.
Andrea Jackson, Ward A. I just want to say that I am a voting constituent, that I'm active, and I have every right. I don't think that you should complain unless you're willing to be part of the solution. So I'm trying to be. I wrote this a little bit, and then I got something to say. It said, despite presenting a petition and comments, the city council and city manager has disregarded the people's voice. They say there is no money for a rental inspection but will reduce the property taxes from 90 cents per dollar to 77 cents, which is a 13 cents decrease and approximate a $3.4 billion that's not being invested in the community. The rental inspection program will only cost $1,000 a year, as in the, and is in the 2018 comprehensive plan. We've come out here today to speak out on the lack of investment that is the status quo of Waynesboro. And in support of Nora, the city manager dismissed constituents with rental stories he did not think applied to the program, but did not address the mountain of evidence that Virginia organizers have presented to the city council and himself that Waynesboro, in fact, needs this program. Personally, and I quote, "The city manager told me, the great thing about America is if you don't like how the local government works, you can move." I don't know if that was exactly on quote, but just a, but with money. You did say, you did say that you could move. And I'm just saying, with what money? And the programs, and you did say, as it says, "And the programs that are like this are found in more urban areas." So rural renters don't deserve to live in adequate housing. I'm still trying to figure out what's the difference. The only thing I see is that in urban areas, the city council or the local government is more aggressive in getting state and federal monies to do this or actually prioritizes it, unlike Waynesboro, who is not, you know what I'm saying, not going to. And this is just the thing with this. Y'all gonna do what you want to do. And I'm telling you, when y'all, I came to the budget last, I was very upset because you did, you know, very dismissive when I asked you about, okay, what is going on? Oh, it's been a long day. But this is what you get paid for, you know? The thing is, is that if I come up in here, yell, I'm gonna be ignored. If I come up in here and I've met with every single one of y'all, you know what I'm saying, if I come up here, do my research, if I, you know, if we knock on the doors, if we bring more research, I'm still just gonna be ignored. And this thing is, is that I've been doing this for 13 years, on and off, you know what I'm saying, in politics. I was the party chair, and I've also, you know, ran a local campaign. It's hard. It is hard doing this in this city, being a young black woman. But I do it because I care about the city, and I want to see it progress. Because I've been here. I was born and raised here. But the thing is, is that I get disheartened because at 77 cents, the thing, the first thing you said was, we don't have the money. There's less than half a cent. The thing is, is that if you don't have the money, that's fine, but this is what that's saying. I don't care about renters. This is not charity. This is not, you know, we're doing stuff for somebody. These are hard-working people who are living in a capitalist society, buying a substandard product. And if, I'm not saying all property managers, because it's not all property managers, but the simple fact is, is that if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, you wouldn't be offended by a registry. It would improve, you know, all of the properties. And that's just the simple thing. These are hard-working people. And this is where I'm, at this point, I'm frustrated because it's, why? Why are you spending money on having a comprehensive plan? Don't have another one. You don't care. Now Bruce, he didn't, he didn't vote for it, so cool. He's not, you know, he's probably not for it, Dale. But if it's been, and people have come up to us, that's not the city's job. That's not this. The city said that they needed all of this. This is what y'all have, and y'all's playing. And we, as the community, have brought you evidence that it's still needed, but that you have the gall to say it's not, we don't have the money. No, you don't want to prioritize it. You don't care about renters. You care about property owners, and that's it.
Connie Wright-Zink.
Good evening. I'm Connie Wright-Zink, and I live on Broadhead School Road in Middlebrook. And I'm here as a member of Virginia Organizing, and we've been working, we've been trying to work with everybody in the city to find out ways that we can help make this rental inspection program. to find out ways that we can help make this rental inspection program a reality. A, because the city council put that forward as something they thought was a priority at one point. And B, because we see the terrible conditions in some of these housing communities. And it's really distressing because we have done a huge amount of research, brought it to the council members, brought it to Mr. Hamp. I'm not sure what happened because about three or four weeks ago, we got radio silence from Mr. Hamp and we thought we were on a roll and, you know, we were all, he never promised that he was going to make this a reality. But what he did commit to was, "I will get back to you with some more information that will, you know, what this would look like for Waynesboro." And suddenly, crickets. So what I think we're concerned about is that now the budget is being considered. Now it becomes, are we getting stonewalled on this? This isn't just us. I mean, you have some information about the opioid proceeds from the settlements. And I mean, isn't there, could there not be something in that money that could be dedicated to housing for people who have come out of jail from being arrested for opioid issues? We just want to work with the city to protect the people who are least seen. And we're, we feel like we're getting stonewalled here. And again, this is something that the city council put through themselves, and we need help. And we're willing to help everybody do the research. We have, you know, lots of people who are dedicated to, yeah, they want this information, let's go get it. We'll do it. But we have to have people on the city council and the city government that are going to work with us and say, and I will repeat, the budget, a budget document is a moral document. It shows the entire city, state, government, family. What are the priorities? And if we're not going to prioritize bringing up the people on the very bottom of survival just so they can live in a house with no mold and no holes in the floors, that is not a big deal. I mean, that's, we're not saying, oh, they should have, you know, a $500,000 home. That's ridiculous. They would be so happy if it was just clean and safe. Now, we don't have the budget and yet we're cutting back the taxes. I'm not a brainiac. I can't tell you exactly how all that goes to play. But you can't have a city support services without saying to the people of the city, "We have to pitch in together. If it's $100 a year, if it's $200 a year, so be it." But we, the city can't run itself. It doesn't have its own source of funds. So how can we be creative and get options for the city to just, we're talking, our research shows that we could probably do this for $100,000 to have a year, to have a city inspector who was either dedicated or increase maybe the halftime person that we already have, because there's one and a half inspectors. Just bump it up. We're not talking about a lot of money. It's $100,000 a year, give or take. But that's what we figured. We need the city to look at the people who are not able to speak for themselves. We're trying to get them to come, but they're frightened. So I would just ask everybody, "Mr. Hamp, we need your input. We just, we're not expecting you to make miracles happen, but we need to be able to trust you to just keep, keep the lines of communication open." Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian Young.
Adrian Young, 237 Skyland Avenue. And I'm not going to repeat what some of the other folks said already. They said it well, and I'm not going to even try to outdo it. What I wanted to do was share a personal story. I work with Alice families. That's asset limited, income constrained, but employed. Women with children and families in my day job and in the nonprofit that we have. And I had the opportunity to go with a mother and a child to look at a property in Waynesboro across Delphine. Now, it was an apartment in that it had a roof and a floor and doors and some windows. But it also had a washer and dryer in the apartment. And I asked the landlord, "Do they work?" And he said, "I think the dryer works. I know the washer doesn't." And I said, "Well, are you willing to take it out?" And he said, "No." Didn't offer an explanation, just said, "No." We walked further into the apartment. I noticed that the radiator didn't have a cover. It was just the radiator pipe exposed about six feet along a wall under a window. And I said, "Sir, are you going to put a radiator cover on that?" And he says, "Well, I might. Well, you know, send me how much you think it might be to cover it." And I said, "Sir, that's, that's a fire hazard." And he said, "Well, I'll look into it." And then I looked to the wall. The wall in the living room had a plate-sized hole in it that looked like somebody's head had gone through it. And I said, "Sir, are you going to fix that?" And he said, "No." He didn't say anything else. He didn't say, "I don't have time." He said, "I'm going to send my maintenance person." He just simply said, "No." And the reason he said, "No," is because he knows nobody's going to hold him accountable for what he is getting ready to put a family into. Now, my client had been without an apartment for six months. She had been living in her car with her child somewhere else. She had been sleeping in a storage unit because that's what she could afford, because we don't have affordable housing in this city. And we had somebody tell her unequivocally, "No, no, I'm not going to fix a pipe. Nope, not going to fix a hole in the wall as big as a plate. Nope, the washer and dryer don't work." But, you know, that's her problem. And that's exactly the attitude that he had, and it didn't change. And you know what my client did? She signed a lease because she had no choice. She didn't want to go back to the storage unit. She didn't want to go back and sleep in her car. And she didn't want to send her baby to go be with somebody else. We can do better. People do what is important to them. Councils do what is important to them. We are depending on you to help the least of these. I am sure everybody in this room has been to church at least once. There will be poor always because people who have an opportunity to do something about it won't. That's where we are. I believe that you can do better. I know that you are better than this. Help us help other people. That's all.
Dr. Becky.
Dr. Becky, Ward A. I just wanted to bring up again the 2018 comprehensive plan that some other speakers have mentioned. And I'm just going to quote it to you directly on all of the things you didn't deliver on all these years. Passing by vacant storefronts or dilapidated housing is a daily reminder to residents of Waynesboro's unrealized potential. It is necessary to build a firm floor in the housing market, first by establishing standards beneath which the community will not allow property conditions to go. By 2020, all rental properties will have been registered with the city by a legal agent for the owner, subject to ongoing inspection requirements. Implement a citywide rental property registration and inspection program. And strengthen the quality of rental housing, especially in transitional and opportunity neighborhoods, like Ward A where I am, a transitional neighborhood. So when we have no movement on these goals from 2018, no attempt to raise standards for the roughly half of people in rental housing in the city, we can see what you value and what you don't value. You're letting these areas of the city remain burdened with monthly rent increases far above what the property owner has just reported on, their tax rates changing. And this is where your waste is, and that's where your attention would truly change lives. So why is it okay for you to let renters down? And bringing us back to now with Virginia Organizing, what is Madam Mayor and Mr. Hamp going to bring to the table about the rental inspection program if they can't come up with $100,000 in our meeting that we have with them on Friday? Thank you.
Danny Ledford.
Danny Ledford, 545 South Wayne Avenue. First off, point of order, three speakers tonight did not state their address. And I would ask that each speaker that comes up here be held to the same accountability. So I'll leave that. I'm here to talk about Wayne Avenue. I know I've spoken to many of you about Wayne Avenue, and I've called the police so many times, they probably get sick and tired.
Did you give us your address?
Oh, I did. 545 South Wayne Avenue, yep. I've always joked that it is a new Speedway. I love the fact that it's been paved. But there used to be a crosswalk up by the library and the YMCA. And Terry Short helped me get the sign up there, so I really appreciate that. To date, the last couple of years, we've had an elderly lady hit on a bike, shattered her pelvis. We've had a kid that was hit at the corner of 13th. People fly on this road in excess of 70 miles an hour. I've been out there before when they come by my house. It's absurd. It really is absurd. And I guess what I'm asking, so we've got to do something before somebody gets killed because kids and people walk around the YMCA and the library all the time. We put these great crosswalks down closer to the city, down by First Pres and First Baptist, but nothing got put back by the YMCA and library. UVA has lights that they pop up at the medical center that helps visibility because I know with that hump, it's hard. But as right now, guys, honestly, to cross that road, I would either have to be Usain Bolt or Michael Jordan, the greatest of all time, and just jump across because it's going to take somebody like that to get across there without getting killed. No one's paying attention. They're on their phones and they're flying. And all I'm asking is that we either put some lights up there or put a crosswalk like we have down at First Baptist and First Pres to make it a little bit safer. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Item 20 is a motion to adjourn. Mr. Allen's not here tonight, so.
I'll make that, Madam Mayor, if I just could just speak to, just for the benefit of folks, I don't normally do this, but Danny, the 14th Street Crosswalk is part, is included as part of the 14th Street sidewalk project that's coming online. So when the paving was done and the restriping was put in place, and the reason why the plastic bags are over the signs right now is because when construction comes late summer, early fall, there's actually going to be a bulb out to reduce the crossing distance and create a visual sort of, hopefully, prompt for drivers to slow the freak down. And a traditional crosswalk, but shorter crossing distance, the signs, the bags will come off and the like. So I apologize that it's taken that long, but that's the reason.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. And that just tells me that something's, you know, because it's, it is dangerous up there.
Yeah, just for the benefit of everybody, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item 20. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll take it.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.